Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular April meeting of the Concord Zoning Board of Adjustment. We will, aside from rejiggering our agenda a little bit this evening, which I'll talk about in a moment, we will be following our usual procedure, which is to say we'll call the cases, ask the appellant to come forward, be sworn in, have a seat in the chairs to my right, and offer us any testimony that he or she has in mind. We ask that the appellants can find their testimony, if at all possible, to a 10-minute interval. Following that, we ask the appellant to step down. We will then solicit testimony from anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard in favor of the appeal or in opposition to the appeal. In most cases, we ask that those people can find themselves, if at all possible, to a five-minute interval. Following that, we will check in with code enforcement to see if there's any comments from the office. And then, if there's been any testimony offered that seems to bear factual clarification, we will offer the appellant that opportunity prior to closing the public testimony portion of the hearing. In most circumstances, the board will act on each case before moving on to the next. The changes that we have this evening to the agenda are as follows. Case 2222 has requested a continuance. Do I hear a motion to open the case?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I hear a motion to continue the case to the May meeting, regular meeting of the zoning board of adjustment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Case 2222 will be heard in May, not this evening. So if you're here for that case, you need not stay, if that's the only reason you're here tonight. We are going to, in the, out of courtesy to our...
Alternate.
Alternate, yeah, alternate. Noel can't remember those hard words anymore. Out of courtesy to our alternate member who is sitting on one of the cases, or two of the cases this evening, we're going to move those up to the top of the agenda. The first is actually a request for a rehearing. This is for case 0822. In the case of a request for rehearing, the board does not necessarily take testimony. We can if we want, but we don't have to. And we are, in this case, considering two memoranda, one from the people who are requesting the rehearing and another from the appellant. Does everyone read the memos?
Yes.
That came out? The criteria for granting a rehearing is that the board, are that the board must find that we either made an error in law, that we made an error in procedure, or that there is new information that was not available at the time of the original hearing, which is material, which has come up since then. Starting at your end of the table, Nick, did you find anything in that memo that fit any of those criteria?
I didn't. I didn't see that we, I don't see any new information, nor did I think we made any errors in our decisions.
Jim?
I agree with Nick. Laura?
I agree.
I agree with my colleagues as well.
Sorry, Chair, I should say for the record, I'm going to be recusing myself from this rehearing request.
Very good. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we deny the request for rehearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The rehearing is denied. That brings us to 0320. Capital Shopping Center, who are requesting an extension to a one-year, a one-year extension requested regarding a ZBA action on March 11th, 2020. That's case 0320. Is there someone here from Capital Shopping Center? Please come forward. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mr. Sokol, what would you like us to know?
I'd like you to know just a few things about the extension requests that were not in the letter that I submitted rather hastily about a month ago. The first thing is, in March 11th of 2020, the board granted three out of four variance requests for the project on the Capitol Commons. On March 13th, the state of New Hampshire declared a emergency for the pandemic, which caused various businesses and whatnot to close, various tenants in retail shopping centers to become very concerned, especially restaurants and whatnot, and it caused a little lag in this project. But the one variance that wasn't granted related to drive-throughs. And the board told the applicant that they felt that was more an issue for city council than a variance, and so the applicant had to go to city council and obtain a rezoning to allow drive-throughs, which it did. Following that, it then prepared its site plan approval and went to the planning board, and then there was some vigorous debate with the planning board about where the front door to the proposed restaurant should be located. And we thought it was going to end up in a planning board denial, but it ended up in a planning board approval, except with the condition related to the location of the door, which they said required architectural design review approval. So the planning board approval was granted in August of last year, and we obtained architectural design review approval in December of last year. The applicant is ready to go. They are ready to pull permits and start working and get going, and city staff brought it to our attention that the variance had been sitting there while all of this was happening. And so that's why we're here for the request. But it's been two years, but they're getting ready to go. They've got construction bids. Things are more expensive than they hoped. They're taking another look at that, but they are going to be breaking ground and beginning construction in the spring, hopefully.
Very good. Any questions from the board?
No.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard, either in favor or in opposition to this appeal? Any comments from code enforcement? We heard a request to extend the variance for one year. We heard testimony that the procedure, the intervention of the COVID pandemic, as well as the procedure required to secure other permits, took more than the two years that the variance was in effect. Anyone care to make a motion?
I'll move that we grant the extension.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
I think it's completely reasonable, given the pandemic issues and the fact that, kind of, not really of our own making, but we urge the applicant to pursue a change to the, with the city council, so.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The extension is granted. Now, are we, we're a person short for the ferry street, aren't we?
Yeah.
Do you want to do something else while we're waiting for her? I'll sit.
Yeah, I'm, you can certainly...
Maybe what I should do is get down to the next case and see if they want to be heard by a four-member board. Can you stay?
Chris's. Yeah, I can tell.
Oh, Chris's, yeah. Okay. We're awaiting another board member for case 0422, so we're going to hop over that and then come back to it, which brings us to case 2422, 10 Whitney Road, IN Industrial District. Property owner is Moral Mill Pond LLC. And the applicant proposes to develop retail space on a parcel within the IN Industrial District and is seeking a variance to Article 2824-J, Table of Principal Uses, to allow retail use in an IN Industrial District, where it otherwise would not be permitted. Good evening. You swear to tell the truth as usual.
I do.
Thank you. Would you identify yourselves for the record as you testify, please?
Laurie Roscio for Interchange Development LLC.
And David Roscio for Moral Mill Pond LLC.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. Moral Mill Pond LLC. Wrong hat. Wrong hat. Oh, boy.
I've had these little handouts. Is it appropriate that I just send them along?
Sure. Is it this?
It is. We just printed it in a brighter color. I didn't know if your, if your version was colorful. It looked online like it was rather washed out.
There's a couple of overlapping colors here, but it might be appropriate to print it out, right? It should be exactly what you folks have.
Yes.
It was very colorful.
Thank you.
And you actually had it on this.
And it's a map we've seen before, I think.
Yes, it is. We just have highlighted some of the restrictions on the site to make it more clear what is left over for buildable area. You know, as you may recall, I believe all of the participants are the same as last time we were here for the other use variance for the restaurant. And so we had a restaurant and a car wash use, which was proposed, and the variance request were granted. This is an IN zone, so neither of those uses were allowed. And tonight, we're before you to ask for use variance for retail. This would be in lieu of the car wash, because the car wash, it just became very difficult to fit it on the site, especially given the constraints of the easement to the city. We didn't want to have to rip up lots of improvements for the city to utilize their easement for water and sewer. I'm sorry?
Question. Ernie's been looking for this.
Yep. It's on there as a file. It's not under the ZBA folder. It's just under the main folder.
Oh, right there.
Concept plan. There we go. So, I don't know if we want to blow that up and just walk you through, but, so first of all, I just want to mention that this is just a concept plan. Obviously, the project would have to go before the planning board for site plan approval, and given the narrowness of the site, there are only a few ways to use it, but the planning board may have other opinions of how it, how the buildings are laid out. So we're just trying to show you one concept plan, and this shows you the restaurant with the drive-through that was approved in the prior month by the ZBA, and then the purple box is the retail building that would be located. So what this plan allows us to do is to keep only pavement in the city easement area, which is a 75-foot wide width that you see on the, in the orange shade at the south end of the property. And again, the site is still encumbered by steep slopes, shown in the green, the wetland and the wetland buffer, shown in the blue, and then obviously the 50-foot setback from Whitney Road, so leaving limited area to put in a structure of any kind. And we thought that retail would work, industrial being very, very difficult to do because of truck movements in particular. So that's why, you know, in general, why we are here before you. As we discussed before, the proposed use is, we think, is reasonable. It's located across the street from Merchant's Way, which will have retail and restaurant uses as well. So it's consistent with the neighborhood. And we talked about the unique challenges of the property, being the wetlands, the wetland buffers, the steep slopes, and the utility easement. We can go into more detail on the utility easement, but it does cover water, sewer, and an overhead power line as well for the utilities. This has been, the site has been vacant. It's never been developed before, and we feel it's unique because of its lack of usable depth along the frontage. Don't think there's anything else that we wanted to add. We were hoping that the colors kind of show you the limitations on the site, and if you'd like, we can talk about any other particular issues. If you have any questions.
Questions from the board?
I just, I didn't review the application package because I didn't think I was sitting on it. So can you just tell me, is this off exit 17?
Yes. I'm sorry. I should have oriented you. So this is Whitney Road off of exit 17, on the west side of Whitney Road.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Did you, I don't have the previous car wash one. Was it, did you add parking as a consequence of the retail?
Correct.
Okay. And it's, how many are required and how many there are?
We have the required now shown on the concept.
For retail?
Yes, for the retail as well. It's a small retail, so it actually doesn't require a lot of spaces. It's much less than a restaurant would require.
You don't have a tenant for it yet?
No, we don't.
Other questions?
Can you remind me, is, so across the street, that's the majority of the retail activity?
Correct.
Is that, across the street, a different zone?
Yes. Across the street is Gateway.
So it's just kind of a, it's just this odd little piece of the...
Well, it's, it's, it is the entire west side of Whitney Road is owned industrial. For example, behind this parcel is Lake Street and Teton Event. So they're an industrial user. To the south of the parcel is Boyce Highlands, and to the north of the parcel is 2 Whitney Road, which we own, Cockard Crossing, which is a multiple-tenant's office, industrial, so it's more of a variety of uses.
I'd like to make a quick comment as well. The industrial uses that Laurie just spoke of are lower in elevation, and Whitney Road is sort of propped up higher, and all the retail uses are at that higher elevation. 2 Whitney Road, which is that, if I can point to it maybe?
Right. You can't really see the other buildings as well.
So the driveway, which leads down to 2 Whitney Road, is fairly sloped. So this is in lower elevation, and this is the Lake Street and Teton Event, which is also lower elevation, comes off the bottom end of the driveway. And the portions that we're talking about are up here, more along that grade with Whitney Road, which is comparable to what the, we have an urgent care proposed here, and a Wendy's here, as well as the Extra Mart. So it's all sort of fits in with the elevation. This is lower as well.
So in between, it's, can you even see those industrial uses from?
This is a wetland here, and then there's wetland buffers, because it's larger than the 3,000 square feet in size. So all of that is grown. So sure, this time of year, you can sort of peek through and see this, but in the summertime, when things grow up, it's very difficult to see here from the Whitney Road frontage. Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
I have a question for Ernie. Maybe I should ask what the applicant's here, and I don't think it'll affect how we consider this, but as a part of the city planning, is Whitney Road at some point supposed to extend beyond where it is now and head south?
Actually, I don't know. I'm sorry.
Yes, that is correct. The master plan calls for an extension of Whitney Road to Sewell's Falls Road. Don't know whose lifetime that'll happen in, but that is the goal.
Chris is not leaving until then.
Great. It's about a mile and a quarter, the extension.
Yeah. And how is that zone now? Again, this is all curiosity, not part of the...
It is owned industrial, but actually, it was part of the city's planning webinars last week that I have not yet had a chance to listen to. So I think there was some ideas for a bigger picture for that area.
Right. And they do intend on...
It's 158 acres. Sorry.
They do intend on multiple uses there, not purely industrial as well.
Any other questions? Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
Don't think so.
Don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in opposition to it? Any comments from code enforcement?
Sure.
Well, that will close the public testimony portion of the hearing. We have a request for a variance for retail use. We heard testimony that the property is unique in its topography, as well as in the presence of wetlands and wetland buffers, which greatly constrain the area that is available for development. Discussion. Andrew?
Yeah, I mean, this is, I think they demonstrated this little sliver of the industrial zone is unique and really not well-suited for industrial use, so I'd be inclined to support the variance. Laura?
I agree with Andrew. I think it would also be consistent with the neighborhood, particularly the neighborhood that's developing across the street. And so I think that that makes sense. I don't think there's any burden on the public by granting it, and I don't think it will diminish surrounding property values.
Jim?
Yep, I agree with what I've heard, and I think that the topography of the site makes it very challenging to do much more than...
Nick?
I agree. Same thing. The layout is so unique that I think that satisfies our hardship requirement.
And I agree with my colleagues as well. Would anyone care to make a motion? Move approval. Move approval of, it's a one variance, correct? Yes.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The variance is granted.
Laura's just not going to come. Laura's just not going to show up.
You think she doesn't love us anymore?
I think she's perfectly happy to have me and Laura on the board tonight.
We'll just take the next one. We'll just keep going.
You're going to be our main Laura this evening. Okay, so that takes care of case 49, or, excuse me, 2422, bringing us to case 1922. 49 North Main Street, CBP Central Business Performance District, property owner PRM Holdings LLC. The applicant wishes to install a sign and is seeking a variance to Article 2869, signs permitted in non-residential districts, Section B4, to allow a sign for a tenant on an upper floor with no building frontage. To install a sign above the first story but below the second-story windows, which will project a distance of 40 inches with a total area of 6.02 square feet, where a sign having a total area not exceeding four square feet must be located in a window on the same floor or at the ground floor entry door if a single principal use. on the same floor or at the ground floor entry door if a single principal use. Gentlemen, you swear to tell the truth, you had nothing but the truth?
Certainly.
Would you identify yourselves for the record, please?
Sure. Seth Greenblatt, Greenblatt and O'Rourke. We are a law firm and a tenant.
Josh Messenger, Advantage Signs, representing Greenblatt and O'Rourke.
What would you like us to know?
That this tenant is a second and third-floor tenant on North Main Street, and we have worked with code enforcement as well as the customer, and it became apparent that they needed this variance because there was no other, no other spot to put the sign. There is a, if you're familiar with the building, it's New Hampshire Federal Credit Union has a large band sign across the front of the building, and that one of the members of Design Review had recommended that we put it right in the middle of the band, which the landlord dismissed. So, if we put it below the band, it would actually be lower than the nine-foot clearance that's needed for Main Street, and that's where we came up with above the, above the band of the sign. There are, the reason for asking for the six square feet as opposed to the four square feet is that a four-square-foot sign would not be legible or readable from Main Street looking up at it.
And why, I read some information in your appeal concerning why it's perpendicular instead of flat against the building. Could you explain that again?
Yes. So, the reason for the perpendicular blade sign is that it's more visible, and if someone were to be walking down Main Street, they wouldn't be able to see a sign that's parallel with the building or flush to the building. So, that's the reasoning for that.
Why can't it go in the window?
I don't believe there is a window there. It's an inset entryway.
Uh-huh. I'm just moving seats. You don't have to. You can sit for this. No, it's fine. I'll continue to sit for a case. I'm just going to move. Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, so there's an inset entryway underneath one of the archways.
Yep.
And there would be no, there's really no place to put a sign there.
Can it go in a window on the second floor?
Again, that would be parallel, and what we were looking to do is have a perpendicular sign so that it's more visible.
I understand that, but if it's permitted in the window, I'm wondering why it can't go in the window.
I'm not sure that a sign placed in any of those windows would actually serve the purpose of being a sign for us, and we would just issue a sign at that point. I think we have a temporary, we got our approval for a permitted sign that's temporary under the archway, and it's so invisible that clients will be outside and call up, and we will have to come down and get them if they still can't find the doorway when they're standing with their sign there. It's a, the doorway, I actually walk by our office door. Often it's just sort of tucked away in there, and so without something that's a more visible announcement of our presence, it's a very challenging space for people to find.
And is that, is that things are cooking next door with an identical sort of sign?
Yeah, there's a number of these blade signs on Main Street at this point. There's another law firm on the other side of the street that currently has one. Just walking down today, I counted three or four from our office down towards the State House, so it's not uncommon in the area anymore. And I think, you know, it does look appropriate in the community. There's a number of, as the buildings have been renovated on the second and third floor, there's more and more tenants on the second and third floors, and there's a lot of first-floor retail space that has taken up the entirety of the signage space on the first floor, so I don't think this is an uncommon issue on Main Street at this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Who owns the building?
It's owned by INX, or it's managed by INX, and it's owned by CMP.
PRN.
PRN, sorry. We deal with INX.
Yes.
Any other questions? Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
I don't think so.
Thank you very much. That's it. Is there anyone here who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Any comments from code enforcement?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request for a blade sign above the second floor. We heard testimony that there's no place on the first floor they can put a sign, and that the peculiar nature of the entrance to the building makes a sign at the entrance or in a window above of no use to people looking for the business. Nick, what do you think?
Well, I haven't been a big fan of perpendicular signs at that level, but we've seen a few of them already, so I think on those grounds, we probably need to, to give it due consideration.
Yeah, I'm, as I'm, I'm just staring at this. I'm trying to figure out, and maybe somebody knows if the banner sign, I think it's probably green with lettering, is all of that sign, and how much, is it thereby right, or was there some sort of variance granted for this banner sign?
I don't know the answer to that. Do you know, Ernie?
I do know it.
It wouldn't be thereby right because it's a relatively new installation.
I mean, if you're counting the entire banner sign, it's probably more than would be allowed for the frontage, right?
You mean the bank sign?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It's just, it's making a lot of signage on the front of that building.
Well, yeah, they pretty much hosed it the whole thing.
Therefore, it kind of creates the, part of the problem, creates the entire problem.
Oh.
Yeah. Which isn't this applicant's fault, but it's kind of the building's.
I understand why they?
Inspector Morgan?
Yes. I understand why they don't want to put it in the window, but where there is a conforming place they could put it in the window, I would have a really hard time granting a variance for it.
Andrew?
I was actually looking at the minutes because there is the, there's another, it's a very similar case with the Pastore Krantz sign. Maybe that was, we approved that, it was a hanging sign on the second floor for a second-floor tenant without frontage. It was about a year ago we approved it, and actually, and they were proposing an 11-square-foot sign. I think, I think these are tough because it logically makes sense on Main Street. It's going to be hard to see a flat sign, but the code is pretty straightforward. But I'm going to, since we approved that, and I think that, I think there should, you know, be some consistency with our rulings on these. I'm going to, you know, it's a very similar hardship request, so I'm going to be inclined to approve it.
Ernie, what kind of, remind me again exactly what kind of sign they are allowed to have. They can have one in the window, and that's it?
Right, they can have one at the entry.
Yeah.
On a, on a sign board down in the entry going in.
Right, right.
So, that's essentially it.
Okay.
There.
So, I guess I have reservations about this because I think the assumption in the ordinance was that upper-floor businesses were not dependent on street traffic, and that the people who were coming to them were, and they wanted to keep the number of signs down on the outside of the building. Two doors down, a certain architecture firm had an office there for 25 years and never had a sign, and people found the place. So, I know, I know life can be lived that way.
Could that firm have been trying to discourage walk-in business?
There were some walk-in business that it might like to discourage, but that, that's irrelevant. My point, my point being that the type of operation, I don't see a sign as being essential to, and therefore, the reasonableness criteria suffers a little bit, and I also don't see the hardship. So, I'm afraid, I'm in opposition to this one. Actually, I have no fear. I'm in opposition. So, I want to ask you a question. Jim, was your point that the combined square footage of the credit union sign and this sign exceeds what's allowed for the frontage?
Yes, and?
And do we know for a fact it does?
And what I don't know is if the building owner could accommodate signage on the first-floor level for the tenant rather than us accommodating it.
My guess is that the bank probably, their top priority is their signage and their renting the top.
Right, but the bank doesn't own the building.
Oh, right, right.
And if it's become this common, I mean, maybe it is time for a zoning change to allow these kind of signs.
Right, but?
But that doesn't create a hardship on this building.
Yeah.
Right, but I think if, starting from, but if you look down the Capitol Commons Building or the other buildings, the signage for the upper levels is on the, is nine feet above the ground, not on the second floor.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at, so whether it was right, you know, I know each case is, you know, looked at, you know, on its own merit, but at the same time, this is a very, very common, you know, with very similar arguments being made, and we've approved McLean at 11 South to have a projecting sign of 12.25 square feet. We approved Orin Reno back in 2013. These are going back some ways to have a sign. I'm not, just in my mind, I, you know, I want to be kind of consistent whether those were the right rulings or not.
I think we turned down an Orin Reno sign on the Eagle Hotel.
Okay. Were those signs, Andrew, though, on the, above the first level or on the first level?
Were they perpendicular signs or were they flush with the wall?
I think they're blade signs like this.
Not the Orin Reno sign. That's flat against.
McLean is.
Is that, the Orin Reno is flat?
Yeah.
But McLean's sort of right above the door, isn't it?
Yeah, they're not above the first level.
Yeah.
Anyone care to make a motion either in favor or in opposite, or against granting the variance?
I will make the motion to deny the variance. I don't see the hardship.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second. I think the hardship is self-created by the building owner.
It's been moved and seconded to deny the variance for the reasons indicated. Any discussion on the motion? Call for a vote then. All in favor of the motion to deny?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
The vote is four to one with Mr. Winters in the minority. The variance is denied.
Sorry, I was going to?
Good evening, Ms. Scott.
Hello.
You are a person much in demand in the community. So, what we'll do now is back up to the earlier, the earlier case on the agenda, which is one from which I'm going to recuse myself, and that is case 0422, 10 Ferry Street. Mr. Warner, will you chair the meeting, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, the next case before us is case 04-22. It's continued from March 2, 2022, the ZBA hearing. 10 Ferry Street, OCP Opportunity Corridor, Performance District, property owner Flatley Concord Center LLC. The applicant proposes to install a 220-foot square foot freestanding sign and is seeking variances to Article 2869A, table of maximum sign dimensions to allow freestanding sign with an area of 220 square feet where maximum area of 100 square feet is allowed, and Article 2869C3 permitted freestanding signs to allow a freestanding sign to have a horizontal dimension of 22 feet where maximum horizontal dimension of 16 feet is allowed.
You swear to tell truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
As you testify, please state your name.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Sokal from Hinkley Allen. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Flatley Company. And when we were here before the board in January, the board granted two of our variance requests related to the number of pylon signs on this property and also the height of the pylon sign. But continued the hearing because they wanted additional information with some questions pertaining to the intersection where 393 meets Main Street, and also the appropriateness of the size of the sign and the lettering. So, since we were here in January, we've done several things. There was also a question about the illumination of the sign. We had originally put in a variance request to the extent we needed one if it triggered Article 286-7 of the Concord zoning ordinance, and I'll come back to that. But the first thing that we did was we met with the executive director of Kimball Jenkins, Julian Gudori, who had shown up at the first hearing and expressed some questions or concerns about how the sign might impact their ability to conduct receptions and other events that they do out in the back of the Kimball Jenkins estate property. And Doug and I met with her, and we met on the Kimball Jenkins property, and we went out back to where they have their events, and we looked and pointed and talked and came to the conclusion that the sign really wouldn't have that much of an impact, if any, on their ability to have functions and events. And we broke huddle with that meeting with Julian saying she would not be coming to any more hearings. She did not oppose what we were doing, and she actually had a conversation with Doug, and they're going to be coordinating with some downtown space for Kimball Jenkins on the project he's doing on South Main Street. So, it's probably something we should have done upfront, but we didn't, and we're glad we did it, and we're glad that the meeting turned out that way. The second thing was we talked to code enforcement about the illumination issue. We were pressed on why we didn't think we needed a variance, and could we prove that the illumination from our sign didn't go off premises, and so we hired a?
Photometric engineer.
A photometric engineer who did a photometric plan and showed that the light from the sign would stay entirely on the property. The city still had concerns about the brightness of the sign in the context of its ambient environment, and the issue that the city raised is that in New York City, you have a bunch of bright signs, or you can have a bright sign because it blends into the background. Here, because there are no lit signs in that area, it should be a sign not as bright. And the city consulted with somebody that they discussed photometrics with and about the brightness issue, and she came back with a small report but had a recommendation about the brightness, which is measured in nits, which I don't know what they are exactly, but our engineer was familiar with what the city's recommendations were, and we have agreed to abide by those recommendations for this sign should it be approved. The city also reached out to the NHDOT about the intersection and the sign and what impact the sign might have on traffic safety at the intersection, which I guess has had some issues. And a couple of things. The DOT confirmed that this sign is not within their jurisdiction. It is not an off-site advertising sign, and they would have had some concerns were an electronic message center board, which it is not. So, it's not within the DOT jurisdiction. The DOT went on to say some things about what might or might not be done at the intersection to improve safety in general, having really nothing to do with this sign, and I just thought the DOT email was not conclusive and somewhat ambiguous. So, we hired a traffic engineer to review the situation and to issue a report, and I don't know whether you have the report or not.
Yes.
You've seen the conclusions that, you know, the size of the sign, the lettering on the sign is appropriate for this location and this type of road. I think the report in fact says that the recommended minimum height for lettering for a sign in this location is 12 inches. Our sign size for the lettering for the tenant signs is 10 to 12 inches. Our lettering? Our lettering for the portion of the sign that says the Concord Center is 14 inches. So we're sort of right in the sweet spot of what the report says. We had wanted Jeff Dirk, the author of the report, who is a very seasoned traffic engineer professional, professional, well-known throughout New Hampshire and Massachusetts, to come with us tonight. He had a conflict. But the report, it's only three pages long. I think it's pretty succinct and pretty well-done. And it basically says the sign is appropriate for its location, will not contribute to safety issues and in fact might help them by providing a visual cue for motorists to know which lane they should get into, especially as they're traveling westbound and to get into the left-hand lane because that's where the property is. So that in a nutshell is what we've done. I hope we've answered the board's questions. I was not planning to go through the variance standards again this evening, but we can certainly talk about them if the board has questions about them.
I don't have a question about them, but I do have a question because the agenda has a different size of the sign than what was in the letter. Because I believe it was supposed to be 200 square feet for the freestanding sign with an area of 200 square feet. The agenda listed as 220. So I just wanted to confirm. I know in the letter from the traffic engineer it says
10 by 20.
It's, yeah, it was 200. You guys had agreed, I believe, at a previous meeting. I just wanted to make sure that was still the case.
It's 10 by 20, 200.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure we all knew what we were voting on if we, we will vote on something. So, okay, thank you.
And just, can you remind me, because it's been a couple of months, the, is that less than your original request? Was at some point the sign, when did you change the size of the sign? Was that before the last meeting or?
During, during the meeting.
During the meeting.
Yes.
I should have remembered.
During the first meeting, yes. And reduced the height somewhat during that meeting as well.
So we approved the height
Right.
And the multiple signs, the only, and you've determined the illumination is no longer needed for variance, so that's withdrawn, so the only issue is
I believe the city concurs.
So the only issue is the size.
Correct.
Right now, okay.
There are no directional instructions on the sign itself, though. The sign is just really listing the tenants and nothing else. Is that correct?
That is correct. The tenants and the building itself being the Concord Center.
Yeah, my concern is that if you figure out that you have to do a left-hand turn, you've got a divided highway and you've got a couple of entrances to buildings right there that some people might think that that's the actual entrance to the property because that's the closest and access point to that area where the sign is.
Yeah, it's guard-railed and fenced off in that area.
It is, and it's a divided highway, so I'm wondering if some people might just overshoot it and do, go to the Sidco station and turn around to try to access the area using those apartment entry points. It might just lead to some confusion in my mind.
Well, I mean, without a sign, there's more confusion as to what to do to get there right now on that same location is our view. And that's sort of corroborated or was corroborated by the traffic engineer. Who thought the sign would be helpful in minimizing conflicts and providing visual cues?
Any questions for members of the board? Jim, are you okay?
Yeah, I'm trying to just orient myself to the westbound and the eastbound. Is it straight across or is it?
It is perpendicular to the road path of travel, so there
Okay.
It's a 90-degree, there's no
So it'll be 90-degree angle for eastbound and westbound.
Right, there's no fanning or splay to it.
Great, that's better, okay.
Andrew?
Not that it is relevant, but is it going to be the same tenants on both sides? So will it be ten and a on one side and that same tenant on the back?
Same tenants on both sides, it'll be fine, yes. Which will change
As the tenants change.
As, well, I mean, it's a multi-tenant building.
Yep.
One of the reasons we originally wanted the EMC is so we could change every day or every hour or whatever. I mean, this will stay up for a while and then a new set of tenants will get some visibility, but yes.
Okay. I don't think it's going to help people find you one bit, but that's not relevant to my consideration either. I think it's going to confuse them, but
Yeah, not that it when, I was going to ask about store street extension and how that might affect this, but I'm not going to ask that because it's not rolling.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are we good?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to the application? Ernest, any comments?
Only that they have answered all the questions that we put forth to them.
Great, thank you very much. Sounds to clear the hearing closed and open it up for discussion.
What's a nits?
Maybe it's like a brightness pixel or something?
Yeah.
I agree with Laura. I don't, I understand the tenants wanting the signage, the property owners wanting the signage. But where the building is, where the sign is going, where the access to this building is, is not going to help them. If it had directions on it, maybe of how to get there.
Turn left then left.
Yeah, like how to get there from there, maybe. Because those are some of the off-site signs I remember us approving for the hotels. It tells you what exit to get off at to get there. I think this is, I agree, I think it's going to create confusion. And if you're leaving, going this way, you're going to turn to go down to the friendly kitchen. You're going to get down there. And if you go the other way, you're going to want, you're going to try and do a U-turn going back thinking the entrance is here. I hope I'm wrong. I hope, I hope that that's not what's going to happen. But I'm thinking if you're coming into Concord, you're going to think that the off-ramp to the friendly kitchen is, or to that area, is how you get to the Concord Center. And you're going to pull a U-turn and then get off and wonder how you're supposed to get there from here until the store street extension goes through. And then you could maybe get closer.
Yeah, talking about that.
But, I mean, those are content-based objections. Really what we're looking at is the size. And I think the size is appropriate because if it's any smaller, you can read it.
Yeah.
It would be more confusing. So I think where we've granted the height variance, now we have to look at the size. And I don't know how you make it much smaller to try and get everything on there they want, on there.
I do think, I agree with what Lord of my Left said that, well, I think what everyone said, except for their engineer, which is that it it, it does seem like it's going to be confusing from a directional perspective. I don't think directions, I really think they want it for the promotional value. They're entitled to a sign of a certain size. They want more based on the hardship argument, which is that they have a very unique lot with extremely small amount of frontage relative to the size of the building. Which I kind of, I mean, that makes sense that they, their lot is unique enough that they really it would be a hardship not to allow a bigger sign. I think where they're putting it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, but if that's not our purview, then that's their decision, I guess. I'm also pleased that they were able to reach an understanding with the Kimball Jenkins estate. Not that, you know, Kimball Jenkins gets a vote, but being in close proximity, they, their opinion, I think, is relevant.
Yeah, my only, my only concern was the safety issue again. I do drive that regularly and, you know, yesterday I saw a triple lane change right there by the Ralph Hill building entrance. And people are not going 35 miles an hour. At that point, they're still going substantially in excess. And I think that just adds an additional element of distraction to that stop.
Yeah, I think the issue before us is not whether it's going to work or not. I mean, it's a sophisticated applicant with commercial space around the state as far as I know. If they think it's going to work, it's, that's their risk.
Yeah.
So I'm inclined, I'll be supporting the request.
Ready for a vote? Anyone make a recommendation or?
I'll make a motion to approve both variances, if that's okay with everyone. I think the hardship is the the depth of the property from where you want to see it. And I think that the sign needs to be this big in order for it to be seen. I don't think it's going to diminish surrounding property values. I don't think there's a burden on the city from granting it. And while it's not there aren't other signs around it like this, I don't think it's inconsistent with the neighborhood, given that it is really primarily visible from a limited access highway. So I would make a motion to approve.
I'll second, but only to say that the record should indicate it's for 200 square feet, 220 square feet.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes five to nothing.
Thank you for providing the additional information.
Thank you for helping us.
That was help, that helped.
Hi, Laura.
Hi.
We did 10 with you.
Okay, all right. Wouldn't ride along you guys without me?
Just send me the extra check, all right?
I will. You can have part of mine. You can have the best part of mine.
Okay, that brings us to case you want to tell Chris?
2022.
2022, thank you, Rose. 87 South Main Street CU Urban Commercial District, property owner 87 South Main Street LLC. The applicant proposes to install a parking structure as an accessory use to the existing non-residential principal use and is seeking a variance to Article 2824J, Table of Principal Uses, along with supplemental standards contained in Article 2857 2857, to allow the concurrent construction of a single-family dwelling on the upper story of said parking structure, where such a use is allowed only as a conversion of an existing non-residential structure in a CU Urban Commercial District. Is there someone here from 87 South Main Street? Please come forward. You want to tell the truth and nothing but?
Yes.
Would you identify yourselves for the record, please, as you testify?
Sure, my name is Maria Dolder. I'm the attorney for the applicant.
My name's Pete Monchkins. I'm the owner of the property.
What would you like us to know?
All right, so I'm going to try and keep this brief. As you indicated, we are looking for a variance to allow concurrent construction of a single-family dwelling on the upper story. So this is really a unique situation for this particular property and sort of a unique situation in your zoning ordinance. So the applicant is in the CU zoning district and so they are permitted to do the parking structure, which I always refer to as a garage, but it's commercial in nature, so it's defined as a parking structure. They're permitted to do that by right. Now, if that parking structure were to exist on the property today, they are also permitted by right to convert the upper floor to a single-family dwelling unit. So the unique circumstance of this particular property is we're looking to do it all at once. So instead of making the applicant first construct the parking structure, establish it as a commercial use and then, you know, a couple of months later, come in to convert it because they would be able to just pull a building permit and convert it at that point in time. We're asking to do that all at once. And so, you know, the justification is that both uses are permitted by right in this zone under zoning ordinance, just not at the same exact time. So it seems unreasonable to request the applicant to have to actually go through those two different steps to get to a place where they'd be establishing a permitted use on the property. So the structure itself that they're looking to construct is a 30 by 40 accessory parking structure. It will have three bays on the bottom and then obviously the entire upper floor would be for single-family use. They'd use two of those bays in connection with their existing commercial use, because I think you're probably all aware of the property. So it has a commercial building already on the property. And then they would use one of those bays in connection with the single-family dwelling that they want to put on the top floor. The garage itself will meet all of your zoning setbacks, so the garage itself does not require any relief whatsoever. And like I said, the conversion itself would be permitted by right, but for the fact that we want to try and do it all at once. We're not looking to add any more impervious to the property, just utilize what they have and give them a little extra space. The intent, as I indicated in the application, is that they want to live there. So this is for their personal use. They want to live on the property. They're going to use that as their residence. Now, just, I don't want to go through the, all of the criteria because I want to try and keep this brief, but obviously if you have questions, let me know. But like I said, it is a very unique circumstance. Not only that the properties in the CU district, it encourages this type of use, but also permits this type of use. It's also consistent with the area. The property right next door is a boarding house and the general area in this part of the city is a mix of both commercial and residential uses. The mere fact that they've, that they can't do the conversion at the same time as building the building is the sole reason that they need this variance. Like I said, if this was already existing on the property, they would be able to convert this without any problems. Given that, there really is no fair or substantial relationship between your general purposes of the zoning ordinance and the restriction on this particular property. Like I said, we would be asking the applicant to actually construct this entire structure. Try to leave like the flooring maybe open or something to that effect so that they could deal with we did meet with design review and fire indicated that we needed to do some fire separation between the commercial and the residential. Clearly, that's easier to do when we construct the building in the first instance. Otherwise, the applicant would have to construct this building, try to use, like leave the floor open or, I don't know, somehow pre-plan for the flooring. Utilize this building for commercial purposes only. And like I said, there's nothing in your zoning ordinance that indicates that a commercial use has to be in existence for any period of time before you can convert it. So in theory, they could establish the structure, utilize it for commercial purposes for a month and then convert the upper floor. That just doesn't seem reasonable nor make any sense to put the applicant having to do that. Because of the fact that the uses are both permitted uses within your zoning district, it clearly does meet the spirit and intent of your zoning ordinance. We had been working with Arnie and zoning and they were very supportive of the proposal. We were trying to see if we could basically get to the end result without actually having to come to the board. Because both uses are ultimately permitted at the end of the day, we're trying to see if we could, you know, figure out some means of getting there and allowing it to happen without multiple permits along the way. Ultimately, it was determined that we did need the variance and that's what brings us to you tonight. In terms of it being contrary to the public interest, once again, there is nothing that would be against the public interest in requiring them to build the entire structure, utilize it solely for commercial purposes and then at a later date convert the upper floor. The public would not benefit from having them do that. It would unfortunately be significant loss to them, not only in cost. I mean, obviously it will be cost more to try and stage it that way, but just in preparation for the upper floor and trying to deal with the city, the permits, fire separation. There was some mention that we also have to take into account like sewer and water lines. So those things can all be addressed much better at the first stage when we're actually building the building. Now, obviously, there's a picture. We submitted this picture. It's still in the design process at this point in time, but that's, you know, generally what they're anticipating, what they're, they're visioning for this particular structure. So clearly, it's going to be aesthetically pleasing. It's going to fit into the neighborhood. It will not diminish any of the area by having this structure on the property. You know, they're going to work on that design and that's obviously not the final design, but we wanted to at least give you an idea that what they're looking to put out there is going to be really nice. It's going to complement the area, be, like I said, aesthetically pleasing. And once again, in terms of substantial justice, still, this would be a real loss to the applicant if he has to build the entire structure and convert it at a later date. So really, this variance is we're just asking this board to allow them to establish the two uses that would be permitted on the property if the structure was already in existence. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I know it's a little unique situation.
Questions from the board?
So, but, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, what's the business there now? I'm sorry.
Uh, it's the real estate agency.
This goes behind that building relative to Main Street?
Yeah, so I think you have a plan. So that's a general plan. Obviously, it's not, we goes, it's called Turner Ave there. It's technically part of this property, that was consolidated as part of this property. But you go down that Turner Ave, you get to the parking lot in the back section of the property, and it would be there.
And behind that is Store Street.
And a steep slope.
Not, not there. It's all, it's all leveled there.
As you go to the east, though, it drops off quite a bit, does it not?
Ernie's pulling up the GIS for us.
Is the grade actually going from the upper level down to the lower parking lot?
Yeah, so, so the, there is a steep grade from South Main to when you get to the back of the building, but once you get to the back of the building and see the parking area there, it's pretty leveled out. So where you see, you know, some of the grass area right along the parking spaces?
So the new building would be lower as well as behind?
Correct.
I see.
And that, you're, you're actually correct. That steep grade is in between that gas station and Turner Ave. It's 10 to 15 feet, I would say, in length.
Where the parking spaces are, that's you see it.
Yeah, but once you get in the back, it's more, it's leveled out. And so where you see those parking spaces there, yeah, the garage will be behind those.
Any other questions from the board?
Yes, so I'm looking at the lot lines. It's, so the back of the property is not necess, isn't, there's somebody between you and Store Street?
Yeah, so.
Odd piece of property.
So what happens is that piece of property that's owned by Steve Dupree, one of his entities, it actually has that little, that runs all the way across the back of this property, along Store Street. And I don't know if, at some point in time, that was done purposeful, but it definitely, it belongs to that other property.
And then another property is the city, that parking lot there?
Across the street?
No, that, with a arrow.
Oh, there, yeah, I, I know it's a.
I'm not sure who.
It's a Dupree property.
Oh, Dupree, okay. So it's a parking lot?
Yeah, I think it's a parking lot, but.
Because it's not metered, yeah, either.
I do believe it's parking, though.
It is.
It's, it's permit, permit parking.
Yeah, I think maybe when they did that apartment, building a couple doors down, they.
Several times. There we go.
Yeah, so that's that property. So we don't actually abut Store Street. We will stay 15 feet off of the back boundary. There's, there's no issue with our setbacks in the back. And obviously, we can't impact any vegetation that's within the abutting property, so that'll stay along Store Street.
Other questions from the board? Andrew.
So in this zone, you can't, a single family, you can't build a single family as a matter of right, right? You can only build?
A conversion.
They want. But if you were just building from scratch?
Right.
You have to build multiple units.
Yes.
They want dense, okay.
Yeah, so you're, the zoning ordinance, I don't even know if they'd be permitted to do just a single family. I, I just know that the way that the zoning ordinance is worded is you're permitted to take an existing commercial use and convert it. And you have two different sections in the zoning ordinance, ones if it's like one to five units, and one if it's five and over. But we're not allowed to just establish the single-family use.
I have no questions. I just thought the case was fascinating to read.
Well, I did too. I mean, it's.
You found, you found some weird quirk that no one had anticipated, probably thinking that that would happen, so.
Yeah, well, and that's why we spent, you know, the city and I, we've spent significant months trying to work through the, like, how does this really work, and can, can we get to the ends, obviously, without having to go through the multiple steps?
Will there be a continued commercial use on the first level?
Yes.
You mean in the, in the existing building?
No, in the.
In the, in the garage. Yeah, so at least two of the bays, the parking bays, will be used in conjunction with the existing commercial use.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in opposition to it? Any comments from code enforcement?
I'm sure you've got it all.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have, to the best of my knowledge, a request, a rationale for a request I've never encountered before, which is that the way the ordinance is written, the use that they want to put it to, is theoretically allowed by right, as long as the building is there before they apply for the second permit. And they've asked the board essentially to waive that requirement, so that the end result will be the same, whether they apply for the second permit or not. Nick, what do you think?
It is unusual, and I think the hardship would be to require them to, to do it the way they technically would have to do it. And I think it makes much more sense to allow, to grant the variance, so that they can do it in a reasonable way.
Jim?
I agree with Nick.
I agree.
Andrew.
Well, it strikes me that the code is clearly flawed. I don't know, could, could be flawed in various directions, but the, the, it seems the intent.
I wouldn't use the subjunctive there. I, I think it's flawed.
It's flawed. The, the purpose of this zone is for density, single-family is not permitted. It strikes me that probably the code should have said, the purpose of the conversion exception is to allow what's already there to kind of be maximized, so the code should say, it should have been there for a while. I don't think it's intended for this purpose, but the plain language of it, I think they found a loophole that exists, so it would be absurd to make them build it twice. So I'd be inclined to, to approve it, but realistically, anyone could come in if they want to build a single-family house in this zone and do what they're saying.
If they had just the right combination of.
They just the right combination.
Right.
Circumstances. Very good. Would anyone care to make a motion? Move approval. Oh, by the way, I agree with my colleagues. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It moved a second. It is any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The variance is granted.
Thank you for the research.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the research.
Always exciting to get something new and different here at the zoning board. Okay. Next case is 2122 112 Merrimack Street, RN Medium Residential District, property owner Robert Bates. And the applicant proposes to construct a 10-foot by 20-foot addition to an existing two-foot family dwelling, and is seeking variances to Article 2841H Dimensional Standards to construct an addition with a front yard setback two feet greater than that of the existing non-conforming two-family home, or approximately 15-foot 6-inch front property line, where 25 feet are required, with frontage of 125 feet where 150 feet are required, and with a lot size of 16,553 square feet, where 18,750 are required. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, so, yeah, very good. Would you give us your name as you testify, please?
My name is Robert Bates.
What would you like us to know, Mr. Bates?
I am here to, I want to put a 10-by-20 addition on the side of my house, towards the driveway. Yep, there it is. I wasn't aware of the setbacks, so I did find out that it was 25 feet from the sidewalk. So as I put in my building permit, the front of my house is 13,5 from the sidewalk. Therein, the addition would be 15,5, because the addition kicks in. I have a photo of my house. I don't know if I can put that up there?
I'm not sure how we'd get it up there, but you can pass it around.
I have, I have three, three.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
I have three copies. So what would be happening is.
You can put it in the middle there.
Thank you.
Of course, if you come in here, you have to salute Caesar, you know.
I do.
I think it's, it's over there. No, I'll take the picture, but it's already projected on the wall, on the screen over there.
Oh, it is, okay.
So is this the size you, side you plan to add to?
Yes. So this is looking at, obviously, Merrimack Street is over here, so this right here is 13,5 from the sidewalk. What I would be doing is coming in two feet, thereby taking the electrical out, and then two feet from this side, obviously, I'm going to kick my deck back a little. It will be the same pitch as this roof, which is either a five or a six pitch, I'm not sure, I was talking to my builder. And then approximately halfway in between these two windows will be the roof coming down. It'll stick out 10 feet, the same as the deck does now, and be the same vinyl siding all the way around. I'll use these three existing windows, one on this side of the addition, one on that side of the addition, and one on the kitchen side, leaving, leaving some blank wall space for couches or whatever, because I don't, my, my house now is, is quite small.
So, so it's going to be flush with the, or it's going to be a little bit?
It'll kick in two feet, thereby taking the electrical out of the, you know.
Oh, so you can leave the electrical?
So I don't have to move it, right? That'll kick in two feet here, kick in two feet here for aesthetics, and then go up approximately halfway in between the two windows, and then come out 10 feet, which is how far out the deck comes. And then obviously be vinyl sided to match the house, with the possibility, that cedar shakes that I put in, and I have a treehouse over here made out of cedar shakes. So I, I might do half vinyl and then half of the cedar shake. We haven't quite decided on that yet.
But i, is the house currently in the setback on, in that direction?
It is, yes. It's 13, yeah, it's 13,5 to the, from the sidewalk to that brick right there. So it would, so my house would be, my, my addition would be 15,5 setback from the sidewalk. So I, we need some nine-and-a-half foot variance.
So the addition will be needing a variance, but it's not as, as bad.
You won't need it coming this way, towards me, if there's no.
No, 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 because my, my property line's way, way over on the other side of the driveway.
Yeah, right.
So it would just come out 10 feet, like I said, the same distance as the deck. I would cut the deck back, whatever it would be, you know, to the two-foot section, just take the section of the deck out. And then, yeah, just 20 across, 10 out. And I'm not exactly sure of the height, like I said, that's kind of to be determined by my builder, you know, the inside, because I have eight-foot ceilings on the inside. It's just, I just, mostly dining room, living space is what it's going to be, because my living room now, right here, is 10 and a half feet by 11 and a half feet, so to say is small is an understatement. And I've owned it since 99, so I'm ready to get a little more room for my retirement years.
You'd like to be able to turn around?
I want to be able to turn around.
Yeah. So a, as I read this plan, the, are you, are you coming out to the driveway? Is that?
It's a, I, I want to say it's two or three feet short, the driveway, as opposed to the, to the house, kind of, you know, there's, there's a little bit from the 30 feet or whatever, it changes two or three feet, as opposed to the house, if you understand what I'm saying.
Yep.
It's not, it's not perpendicular, but it's not that much off. So it would give, I would have to estimate probably about three feet to the driveway, three, give or take, from, from the edge of the, I mean, from the edge of the addition to the driveway.
Right. Other questions from the board? Anyone? Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
I don't think so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in opposition? With that, we'll check in with code enforcement. Any comments?
Sir? I'm all set.
In that case, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request for a variance for an addition to an existing house. We heard testimony that the interior spaces of the house, it's a duplex, and the interior spaces of the house are small, very small, and that the new addition, although it would impinge on the front yard setback, would not impinge as much as the existing house already does. Andrew, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's a reasonable use, and although he's, his setback is going to be less infringing than it is now, and the frontage and the lot size issues are similar to what they are now, so I think it's not any material change to what's currently going on.
Nora?
I think it's a reasonable use, and he, it's, it'll fit within the character of what the house is. It's not a massive addition, so I'm in favor.
Jim?
I agree with Laura and Andrew. So do I.
As do I. Did you have some else? Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The variance is granted.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I hope you enjoy your new, larger living room. All right. The next case is 76 Elm Street, case number 2322. It's in an RN residential neighborhood district. The property owner is Tony Matrano. The applicant is looking for an after-the-fact variance for a shed that was installed by a previous owner without a permit that encroaches into the side yard setback, and is seeking a variance to Article 2841 Dimensional Standards, Section H, Table of Dimensional Regulations, to allow location of the shed to be within two and a half feet of the easterly property line, where 10 feet are required. Ah.
Hi.
Ellen, do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
I do.
Would you identify yourself for the record as you testify, please?
Tony Matrano.
Fill us in.
All right, so I purchased the property in mid-November. As is, the shed was already there. I talked to the previous owner, and they said that the shed's been there since 2017. I got the letter from the City of Concord in January, letting me know that there were no permits taken on the shed, and it didn't meet the setback requirements. So I've been working with Dario, and I believe I also talked to you, about just trying to just kind of make things right. I would rather not move the shed. I did tie a string from one of the property poles to the other in the back on that line, and it was around three feet, but there was some brush there, too, so I figured two and a half was kind of safe. The shed does have heat, which is the propane tank in the picture, and electric.
It's a fancy shed.
It's beautiful.
It's, is it a little guest house?
No, it's just a shed. I was going to use it for rock equipment, because I mine and make jewelry and do stuff like that, and paint, and just kind of use it for storage as well, so.
These photographs that show furniture and so on, is that in the shed?
That was in the shed.
But it's not now?
No.
I see.
No, the previous owner had it as, like, a man cave.
Ah, or a man shed, anyway.
Is it different than a she shed?
Yes.
Is there a difference?
Well, you know, we'll keep it appropriate. A she shed, yes.
Is there a bathroom in it, too? Is that what it's?
I'm sorry?
I see the bathtub and the toilet and so forth. Is that in there, too?
That is not in there. There is no water in the shed.
I'm just wondering what those, the relevance of these pictures, that's.
I came from the listing.
Okay, nice, fine.
I think the bottom pictures, are the bottom pictures?
Yeah, the bottom pictures of the shed.
I, I was a little confused by that, too.
Yeah.
A question for Ernie. Why is this a variance rather than an equitable waiver?
I guess it could be an equitable waiver.
What equitable waiver is?
That's right. It hasn't, is it the 10 years? I have to look at. I think there's a time period with that.
There may well be. I don't remember. The equitable waiver is when nobody remembers who goofed up?
Oh, yes.
Usually that's.
Ten years.
It's usually 10 years, but it's also when it was an honest mistake. You're asking for forgiveness, going, oh, I thought the property line was here, it's
Usually that's.
Ten years.
It's usually 10 years, but it's also when, um, it was an honest mistake. You're asking for forgiveness going, oh, I thought the property line was here. It's really here. Um, I don't think that case would work here.
She wa- she bought the property without knowing.
It was her honest.
Assessing went out there. Uh, they discovered it and that's where it all came from.
All those assessing people always find this.
So it was her honest mistake, but I think it would have to have been the prior owner's honest mistake.
It would have to be an equitable waiver?
Or the owner may demonstrate that the violation has existed for 10 years and more, or more no enforcement action.
Well, it looks like it could have been.
He said that there was a shed there pre, before the nice shed. I, I don't know.
If you want to testify, you'll have a chance to do so. Thank you. All right, uh, other questions from the board?
I'm, I'm sure it's in there, but what would you have to do to make it conforming?
Um, so if the variance is approved, then I'm going to go through and get all the permits that are needed and the inspections and everything else. That way everything is good. If the variance is denied, then I can either remove the shed or I can move it so that it is 10 feet from my property, um, my neighbor's property line.
Can you put that aerial photo back up again?
Yes.
Does the aerial photo show the shed?
I'm just curious what's.
The she shed showed?
It does, but don't pay attention to the lines. I don't know, uh, that came with the application.
No, can you, to our G I S?
Oh, sure. Yes, alright.
Sorry, sorry, I wasn't clear.
Now, when I talked to the previous owner about it, he said that he had no idea that he needed permits because he was just putting, replacing one shed with another shed and that he didn't know about the setback regulations. And I'm like, awesome. I'm doing what I can to try to make it right.
So the shed is the rectangle on the right then?
Correct.
What, what's that on the other side of the house, that little structure?
Yeah, that is a little metal shed, um, and that's used for like tools. I have like the snow blower and their lawnmower.
And that's legal?
How is that?
Is it a permanent structure or is it one of, uh, movable type? That's not our issue, but I'm just curious.
If, it can be within five feet, I think, if it's under a certain size.
Yeah, that one is small.
Considered an auxiliary structure?
Yeah. Okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Because I'm thinking about where my shed is.
Could you, to put Andrew's.
I hope they don't drive by your house.
Okay.
But the shed is around 13 by 20-ish. Um, there is like a porch on the outside of the shed that, you know, there's steps because I had a hot tub there, which also had no permits taken out for it, so, um.
So it's a substantial structure. It's, it's not, i- if it had to be moved, it would not be easy to.
Correct. Yes, I tried contacting my title insurance and trying to go forward with the claim through them. They said that basically I have a deductible of like $2,500 and that they'll help cover me if I remove the shed. Not if I have to move it.
Is it on a slab or footings? What's underneath, what?
I believe it's cinder blocks, uh, some sort of block underneath it.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Hey, you're welcome. Thank you.
Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? Please come forward. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but.
Andrew.
May we have your name, please?
Amelia Lesmeres.
Amelia?
Yeah, Amelia Anne. I am the immediate abutter on her right side.
And your last name again, please?
L E S M E R I S E S Lesmeres.
So we have a letter from her in the application. What would you like us to know?
I would just say that, um, it does not impede my property in any way. Um, it would be a financial disaster for her to have to move it because she told me that she would have to get a crane and they would have to come onto my property, which I wouldn't have a problem with, but they'd have to take the lines down to do it. And I've got boulders as big as cars in my, my yard. So they, I don't know how the crane would do it. And I think it would be a financial disaster for her.
So you're in favor of the request?
I mean, it's not bothering me.
Very good. Thank you. There was someone else. Please come forward. Swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
May we have your name, please?
Melody Towle, T O W L E.
What would you like us to know?
I live at 110 Elm Street and I, I've been there since 1968 and there's a little, to give Tony a little bit more history. That, that shed was brought in by Reed's Ferry Lumber. They assembled it on site.
The one that's there now?
The one, the one that's in question right now. The shed that's over here on the other side, the metal one, was here. They moved it over here. There's another shed that's behind it. There's two sheds. There's a wooden shed that's behind it. That one's been there since, uh, better than 20 years.
This is like a shed compound?
I know, you've got all sorts, all sorts of stories.
This one here, this one was really built really, really good. I mean, like I said, Reed's Ferry Lumber put it together and they put in, um.
And do you remember what year that was roughly? Do you remember when that was?
About 2017.
2017, okay. You said that, yeah.
So.
Not ancient history.
It's not that old and I, I kind of agree with what everybody's saying. And I, if, if Tony has to move it, I means it's going to be quite an expense. I says it, it's a real nice shed. I mean, the thing is never, it's solid. It's never going to go anywhere. It's probably going to last longer than the mobile homes you live in. But, um, that's the history as far as that one that is in question and the other one where that other metal shed came from, which is about a 12 by 14. I don't know what's in it, but.
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in favor? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition? Any comments from code enforcement? Well, that will declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request to grant a variance for a shed which sits in the side yard setback. We heard that it was constructed by a previous owner who did so apparently in ignorance of the ordinance. And the current owner would like the board to grant relief to avoid the expense and inconvenience of moving a shed. We heard the neighbors testify that its location there causes them no problem. Nick, what do you think?
Well, I think the hardship is that, uh, it would be hardship to move it. Um, and we heard from abutters that have no issue with the fact of where it is. It just seems that, uh, and, uh, this is a situation that was created prior to, without the knowledge of the, um, the current owner, I'm inclined to support it.
Jim?
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
Who's agree with me? Andrew?
I regrettably have to disagree. I think that, um, I think it's an equitable waiver situation if the prior owner was ignorant, but we would have to hear evidence of that. I'm not sure the prior owner was ignorant. I, uh, I, I, well, I shouldn't speculate on it, but I, I just, I think that we have to look at it from what it would, if we were starting from scratch. And I, it's hard to see the hardship. Such a huge shed, so, so right close to the lot line. So, I mean, I think if she could go back and look at the equitable waiver standard and, and, and show that the prior owner did it with actual ignorance, then, you know, I would look at that argument pretty carefully.
Very good. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant, uh, based on the fact that, um, the, the hardship to come into compliance, I think exceeds the, the reasonableness and the purpose of what the ordinance was trying to do. We've heard testimony from the, the neighbor that this, this doesn't, is not a, a problem to them.
I'm inclined to agree with you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I think, Jim, that he beat you.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? I think from the point of view of strictly speaking the letter of the law, you're probably right. We certainly have an argument to make. Uh, on the other hand, as a practical matter, it seems to me relief is appropriate in this particular case.
I also, I have to, to go on that. I don't know if the prior owner was ignorant because Reed's Ferry should have known that there was a permit that needed. So even if the owner didn't, the fact that there's utilities and the fact that there's, that, that's a reputable company that has pulled permits in the city before, that's, that's more likely, yeah, so.
So, uh, it, if it should have been an equitable waiver and there were ever a legal battle over this, I suppose that could become a problem. But in this case, the larger problem seems to me to be asking them to move it. I guess we have a motion and a second and we've had our discussion. Anyone or all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Nay.
It's four to one with Mr. Winters in the minority. The variance is granted.
Good luck with your other permit processes.
Thank you.
Our next case, our next case is case 22, 2222, 42 Washington Street, Petticook. RD Downtown Residential District. The property owner is Wendell J. Butt Funeral Home. The applicant's.
Uh, we postponed that.
Oh, we did.
Yeah.
But I wanted to hear it anyway.
So we postponed that one?
Yeah, we did postpone it. It just didn't seep through to me, even though I voted for it. 2522, pardon that blunder, 60 Snow Pond Road, RO Open Space Residential District. Property owner is Dagel Joseph A. Family Trust. The applicant seeks to remove an existing non-conforming single wide manufactured home and to install a double wide manufactured home in a different location and seeks a variance to Article 2885B3, continuation of non-conforming structures to allow replacement of an existing non-conforming manufactured home with a larger non-conforming manufactured home, which is allowed only in manufactured housing subdivisions and parks per Article 2824J. Uses A4 and A5 and prohibited in the RO District. Swear to tell the truth and the truth. May we have your names as you testify, please?
Joseph Dagel.
Christie Smith Perry.
Please have a seat.
So I have a handout, a new one. Can I give that to?
Of course.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Oops, I got one. There you go.
Thank you.
There you go.
We've got the handout. Fire away.
All right. So the situation is that we purchased almost seven acres of land a couple of years ago, with the intent to build a house on it. And, um, for the past two years, we've been cleaning up the property because it was a complete eyesore and dumping ground. Previously been owned and operated by a septic company on that location. So there's asphalt piles of it. There's construction debris, um, going around the property. You trip over chunks of metal sticking out of the ground and pull it out and, oh, it's a lazy boy chair. And one thing after the next. So we've, uh, we filled up, um, a couple of dumpsters, the biggest ones that they have, and we're still working on it. Um, the situation that we're in is that the, uh, the house that we wanted to build, well, we spent $3,000 on house plans, got a quote for, you know, $800,000. So then we started over and we get to, uh, spend another five grand on house plans and, uh, now we're up to, uh, well over a million. So this wasn't working for us very well. And, um, being a real estate agent, my income hasn't been what it is because of COVID and lack of inventory. So Christie, uh, came up with a great idea. We hope it's a great idea. We hope that you think it's a great idea, is to put a mobile home. We never thought we'd see ourselves in a mobile home, but we drove by Concord Homes. There was this mobile home that was double wide, uh, 44 feet by 28 feet, uh, manufactured home. And it, um, it looked like a small ranch house, very attractive. I think you might have a picture of it, but that's what it looks like. This is the one, this is the one that's there now.
Yeah, the new manufactured homes are gorgeous. You would, most of them you can't tell, uh, once they're on the lot.
Yeah, and you know, they're very similar to the modular homes which are accepted, but I think the big thing is that it's on a slab. So this one's on a six inch thick slab, um, tied down, cemented into the ground, not going anywhere. Let me, let me continue with my notes here.
Thanks.
So what we have is grandfathered non-conforming use, basically.
That's what they want to put on it.
Last summer, we did have a variance approved for the larger house, uh, with the impacts on the wetland buffers were all approved. It was just too expensive. So this new home, uh, manufactured home, uh, it does fit within the footprint. It meets all the setbacks. Uh, it's more conforming. It's away from the wetlands. It's away from the road. The existing, uh, trailer is not, um, it's way too close to the road and, and so it's not conforming. By the way, it's like 50 years old.
It seems to have an addition on it too.
It does.
Which is not actually part of the trailer, right?
No.
Yes, correct. So, yeah, it's, it's pretty big.
Is the footprint with the addition less or greater than the one that you'd like to build?
It was still less, I believe.
Still less?
I don't really remember.
I think the footprint with the new one is bigger. I don't know how much, but it's, it's bigger. But my point is that there's less physical and visual impact on the pond and the wetlands. We're also planning on replacing the old failed septic system with a septic, uh, that is state approved and meets all the DES standards, which would be beneficial, obviously, to the pond and the water quality. The diagram that I handed out does have the, um, elevations for the, uh, for the new manufactured home. The reason why this is important is because if you drove by, uh, looking to your right on Snow Pond Road and you see the existing, uh, trailer down there, you kind of look right over it. You don't even know it's there, um, because there's a 10-foot drop. There's a grade there. And you basically drive by and you go, oh, look at this beautiful pond. And it is beautiful. That's why we want to build there. Or in this case, move there. So that, that same thing would be, uh, existing when we put the manufactured home there because it's basically the same height. If we were to build a two-story home, we'd be looking at the back of a two-story home, not a pond. So another reason why we think this is a decent idea.
This is not a, is not a mobile home that you're proposing to put in?
Yes.
It is. It's a, it's, it's not a mobile home because they've changed all that. There's different standards. They don't even call, they don't even make mobile homes anymore. They make manufactured homes.
Right.
Because they have, you know, this one's like two by six construction.
Right.
Better than stick builds. So because of these high standards, they're now manufactured homes.
If they were going to stick build a house there, would they need a variance?
They already got one from us.
Yeah, they, I mean, I don't know what they have. They wouldn't need a variance, you know, for the house to build a single family dwelling there, no.
Sorry to interrupt you, but.
I just want to say this because it drives me crazy. So every house that is stick built on the pond, we're friends with our neighbors, suffers from water damage and moisture problems. The trailer or the mobile home is more likely not to flood than all the houses on the pond. Like my biggest concern is, you know, the longevity of this home and seeing the house next door that just recently sold. The floors were all buckled. It was a major problem that she had the whole time living there. We spoke to other people on the pond who hasn't, you know, it's a major issue there. And it just like, you can't fight the moisture. Once those foundations go in, you ha- like when we talked to the builder about the big house, he was talking about how we would have to have pumps running 24/7 just to, I mean, they literally, when they dug 18 inches in, it just, 18-inch hole starts filling with water immediately. You know, it just, I feel like it's our safer option because if the, if the land does flood, it's most likely going to go underneath.
So you plan to have a slab on grade or are you building the house up on pylons?
They're, they proposed a slab, I believe, a cement slab.
Put in a six inch slab, just a little larger than the dimensions of the, uh, manufactured home.
Yeah.
And they, they, it comes with anchors like right.
Hurricane straps.
Pardon?
And they do the hurricane straps too.
Yeah, they do hurricane straps and they anchor it right to the foundation.
They fasten it to the slab.
Yeah, so even if we were to have, um, a stick built house there, which is not affordable, um, we'd still be putting it on a slab because, I mean, our neighbor does have a, uh, what is it called? A half foundation.
She has a four-foot foundation.
A frosh wall?
Yes.
Right next door. Her hardwood floors are buckling. We were going to buy that house because it, it butts ours. You know, just buy the house and have the land to go with it. And, uh, besides, it wasn't affordable. It was just, the house was destroyed from the wetlands. So we were thinking, jeez, if we ever get a house here, let's put it on a slab so we don't have to deal with this. I mean, kind of abstains not having a basement or an undercar garage, but that's what's going to work for the wetlands.
I see.
We don't, oh, sorry. The other thing is, is that it's the least intrusive way to get a home on the pond. For us to build a house, it could take six to nine months. That means our neighbors have to listen to the construction, the banging, the digging, everything that goes with it. This can all be done within a three weeks' time. We don't have, really have to cut down any trees. We have like a handful of trees that have to come down versus many a trees that would have to come. handful of trees that have to come down versus many a trees that would have to come down if we were just traditionally stick-built. It just seems like it's the least intrusive, you know, way of about giving us a home without bothering everybody around the pond.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is that mobile home on a slab now? What's underneath it?
It's just on dirt. There's nothing underneath it.
No, it's on a metal verderbs, like...
I didn't even see that.
It's a mobile home, so it's on a trailer.
It's on trailer, yeah.
It is a trailer.
It has a chassis base, the old school ones have a chassis base.
Yes, exactly. And there's just sand underneath that. So, by the way, you know, other than the new one looking a hell of a lot better than that thing and meeting the setbacks and being less intrusive to the water and all that, there's not much going on on that side of the road as far as fancy houses. I don't think it would bring down the aesthetics. There's, there's mobile homes on Snow Pond Road.
There are. There's mobile homes already.
And there's way worse. Just, our neighbor has, we don't exactly know what, there's about five or six little cottages that were built, we're told, out of...
It was scrap material.
Scrap materials. There's, there's, you're going to like this one.
As they started to build the house, this is horrifying, as they started to put the second story on, the house started to lean. And with some prayer, the owner slash builder left it at that height. If you look at our neighbor's house, it looks like a story land house. It is so the most ridiculous thing that you would ever see. And it has eyeballs painted on it. I kid you not. We have to look at that. The eyeballs painted on the story land house.
One eyeball, one eyeball, about six feet wide in this fall.
I'm not sure eyeballs require a variance, though.
No. But it's just funny, though. It's just the whole situation.
My point is, it's kind of a creepy neighborhood. It certainly wouldn't make it any worse.
How long have you lived in?
We've had it for two years.
Two years.
I was going to say...
We've been trying. We've been trying so hard.
Maybe five years ago, I was on a run and got chased by a dog from this property, so.
Did you?
Yeah.
But it wasn't their dog?
It wasn't it. I checked. It wasn't their dog. But so, part of what I'm hearing here is that because the property is so wet, you're concerned about a foundation. And so, one of the hardships may be that because of the nature of the wet piece of property, a slab built, structure would be preferable.
I mean, in the end, you know, my biggest concern is that there's an age difference between us. Sorry, he didn't want me to bring this up. But there's going to come a day that I have to take care of him and I'm on disability. And like, I cannot afford this big giant house with these big giant taxes. Like, there's just no way that I can do that. You know, this is, this is what we have. I'm sorry. But this is, like, I have to think about the future. And like, I was born and raised in Concord. Like, I just want to come home. This is where I want to be. And we've tried everything. I mean, in the end, we've, we spent over $20,000 and we're out $20,000. And we still don't...
Kind of in the cost of the land. That was way more just wasted money.
Well, let's get back to the criteria for a variance here.
Do you mind if I interrupt? There's just one last thing I want to add that I think is real important.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
73 Shawmett Street. Met with Ernie last week, told him, hey, there's some ambiguity with the zoning laws and some vagueness, some inconsistencies. And by the way, besides all that, whether an actual manufactured home should be permitted in the RO, why is there one on 73 Shawmett Street that was built in 1997, which is RD, which is same situation, not permitted? Ernie's response was, the staff looked into placement of the manufactured home at 73 Shawmett and can find no action by the Z B A that would have allowed it to be placed on that piece of property. I really don't know what happened in that case, was his response. So my point is, well, they obviously got a permit because they put the manufactured home on the property. So if they got a permit, why do I even need to have this variance? Why aren't I just allowed to do what they've done?
I wish I had an answer for you, but I don't. We're here this evening. We, we have a job to do, so. Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
No, thank you.
Questions from the board? Jim?
No, I think I have enough information.
No. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The record will show that there was no one present to testify either in favor or in opposition. Any more comments from code enforcement?
Nothing.
We have a request for a variance to place a manufactured home on a site where manufactured homes are not permitted. We heard testimony that it would replace an existing manufactured home. It would be cited more in compliance with the ordinance. And we also heard testimony that there's hardship created by the water table on the land making a basement and a conventional stick-framed house impractical, whereas a manufactured home can be installed on a slab. Andrew, what do you think?
I think there are a number of aspects here that convince me there's a hardship that the water table, as you mentioned, that it, the size of the lot, presumably the code doesn't want manufactured houses because they don't, you know, it doesn't meet the character. But I think here, there's our, they're upgrading. It's going to be much nicer than the current manufactured house. I wasn't too impressed with the last argument he made about, you know, someone else got away with it, so why can't I? But let's put that aside. Other than that, I thought, you know, it was persuasive.
Laura?
I agree with what Andrew said. I also am, I, I'm a proponent of manufactured homes, again, besides the fact they're not called mobile homes anymore because they're not mobile, have come a long way in construction and a lot of them are superior to stick-built homes nowadays. And so the fact that we differentiate in our zoning between a stick-built home versus a manufactured home versus a modular home even, there's ones that come together in pieces and snap together. And those fall between, you know, and those don't have the special zoning criteria. So, again, based on, you know, Andrew already talked about the other criteria, but I think it's a reasonable use and it will be better for the neighborhood and bring the property more into compliance than it currently is, so.
Yeah, I think Laura captured it. It's a shame that this property is no longer going to be in Concord, but...
You mean this house?
Yeah. No, on the whole, obviously, it's an improvement to the property. I think that we're replacing one non-conforming structure with another non-conforming structure, but the new structure will, on the whole, be better for the property.
Nick?
I agree.
As do I. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to grant. It was a single variance, I believe. Yes.
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The variance is granted.
Good luck.
Move to approve, mark second minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
We love the minutes.
Thank you.
Anything else that we need to address this evening, Ernie?
I do not think so. We, we have put together a site. You know how, I'm sure you've all dealt with developers or engineers who've sent you large plans that are, you know, 100 megabytes or something to that effect, where you have a site where you can post those? We actually have one now.
Oh, okay.
And again, can I just find out, does everybody still want to receive the full paper packet? There's no problem with doing that, okay?
Yeah, if it's not a burden to you, I...
No, that's no problem. That's why I'm asking. Because I mean, it doesn't, I can have both of them for you because it's sometimes it's easier to search using one of the F T D sites like that and you can get the paper copy as well. We already set it up.
I can do it either way.
Well, I forgot.
No, I like the paper copies.
Yeah, but it's good.
But you don't have to email us PDFs because, you know, we can get it pretty easily on the site.
Yep. If, if, if it's working for everybody, I say, why fix it?
Sounds good.
Is that, is it, is it inconvenience for him to deliver them?
It's on the office. He drives around and visits everybody.